Well, welcome. It is just now 4:00 PM. And this is the special formal meeting for the City of Iowa City on March 23rd, 2021. And it is 4:00 PM. And I'm gonna ask for roll call, please.
Urquhart.
Here.
Mims. Sully.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right. Well, welcome, everybody, on a special Tuesday. Or this is the fourth Tuesday of the month, or no, I don't know what Tuesday we're on, but it's one of them. All right. Item number two is Melrose Court Sewer Improvements. This is a resolution approving project manual and this an estimate of cost for the construction of the Melrose Court Sewer Improvements Construction Project. Establishment bids of bid security to accompany each bid, direct and city clerk to post bid notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And staff presentation, please.
Looks like my screen share is disabled. Can I get screen sharing? Perfect. Hello, I'm Joe Welter. I am a senior engineer in the engineering division. And I may be talking about the Melrose Court Sewer Project today. So this project is about four and a half years in the making. It was originally planned as a sanitary sewer replacement project. The design started in November of 2016. We had a public meeting March of 2018. I think it's important to mention that this project started as a sanitary sewer replacement project. It was not meant to be a complete street reconstruction project. But as we looked at the design constraints, as we looked at the corridor, as we listened to public comments, and we found other information that we discovered as the design progressed, the project got more complicated and and we had to adjust the design to to adjust to the parameters that we found. So the project is located, Melrose Court, which is a couple of blocks away from southeast of Kennick Stadium. And it's immediately south of the University of Iowa Hospital and Clinics. This project involves replacing an existing sanitary sewer pipe, which is a 16-inch, six-inch pipe, with a new eight-inch and 10-inch PVC pipe. The existing pipe and the proposed pipe are pretty much running straight down the center of Melrose Court. Existing pipe has sags in it and dips in it. The discharge pipes from the area were constructed in the late 1800s or early 1900s. So it's a very old sewer line that's going through here. The location of the sewer and the sags in the sewer really prohibited us from doing rehabilitation, like lining the pipe or doing trenchless installation of the pipe. And so really ended up with a process of basically having to dig up the whole corridor to get at the pipe, take out the old pipe and put in a new pipe. And so it was trench work that needs to be done. There will be new sanitary sewer services that will be installed from the edges of the right-of-way to the edges of the easement. And we will, and we're relocating. We're relocating two of the discharge pipes that previously went under a building on the 220-222 Melrose Court property. These two pipes bisected that property and go underneath the building, the house. And so this project looks to move those into a permanent easement. It's better for the property and the building, and it will be easier to access, maintain and repair the public sanitary sewer and storm sewer in the future. The storm sewers also being improved on the north half of the project corridor. We are upsizing and changing the material of the storm sewer. So we're going from 12-inch pipe to a 15-inch pipe. There'll be a new outlet, which will all be concrete, precast concrete, the intakes and the outlet. There'll also be an additional storm sewer intake, which will help alleviate some of the flooding that has been reported in the backyards of these properties. The existing right-of-way is only 25 feet wide. That's extremely narrow. If you think about a new street that we would construct in a subdivision, that would be 26 or 28 feet wide. So a new street in a new subdivision would already be wider than this entire right-of-way is. And so we were forced with trying to figure out what to do with that. And so we're, we're putting back in a 20-foot wide street and a five-foot wide sidewalks. We're paving from right-of-way line to right-of-way line. Where we disturb and where we remove driveways. And within the easements, we will be putting in new driveway, driver aprons and the driveway pavement. The storm sewer will discharge into the edge of the, in between the 223 and 331 Lucan Drive location. We received a lot of public comments before this meeting, as well as earlier in the project, about relocation of power lines underground. We would like everyone to know that this was evaluated, this, this would be our preference to do that. And city staff looked at this. In $2016, when this was evaluated, the relocation of the power lines off of the poles and underground was approximated by Mid-American at the time as $160,000 that the City of Iowa City would need to pay. The removal of the aerials from the houses and the relocation of the pedestals and transformer boxes was roughly another $90,000. And so when we had originally budgeted this project at $300,000, another $250,000 on top of that is roughly doubling the cost of the project. What we're doing with this project does not preclude us from relocating those power lines underground in the future. We received a lot of comments, especially during the easement process, as well as during other times in the design process about the ability of residents to get in and out of their properties during this project. Because of the fact that we're basically tearing out the roadway and replacing the roadway. And, and it is going to be a fairly disruptive project because of the narrowness of the right-of-way. And so we have worked with the consultant and will be working with the contractors as they bid on this. And the eventual awarded contractor that we did, we divided this project up into eight phases. Eight phases. And this is intended to minimize disruption to the residents. And so the contract would be required to maintain access to the driveways throughout construction. We communicated this quite frequently during the acquisition, the temporary construction easement process, that for those residents and those owners of properties that were advocating for their, for their tenants, that we would be working with the contractor to maintain that access. So at times, this might be over gravel. It won't always be over pavement. And it will take some coordination and patience on everyone's part. Contractor will be in charge of getting the vehicles in and out of their construction area. At times, residents will need to wait. The contractor may need to move some equipment. They may need to finish up something that they're doing. And so so, so we just want to communicate that we're, we're doing everything we can to try to minimize that disruption to the residents. This is our scheduling costs. The bid opening will be, we bumped that back a week since this public hearing got bumped back a week. So April 13th will be that. We intend to start at the beginning of May, have substantial completion done before the football season kicks off. This is right very close to Kennick Stadium. And a lot of, a lot of people use this corridor to get to the stadium, as well as to do some of their pre-game and post-game activities. And so we, we have emphasized that we want this project, all items to be done by the end of August. There will be a 30-day period in between the substantial completion, the final completion. This is very typical in all of our projects. In this particular project, we've required everything, all of the bid items to be completed. But we still have that 30-day period for the contractor to do some cleanup items or some small punch list items. We have specifically stated in the contract documents, in the project manual, the plan notes, and the specifications that any work after the substantial completion date of the August 25th, it'll be limited to weekdays. No work will occur on home football game weekends. And after that August 25th date, the roadway and sidewalk must be fully open to the traffic by pedestrians and vehicles. Our estimated construction cost of $525,000. Again, that shows a lot of things that we've added into this project. Those new discharge pipes, getting the pipes out from underneath that, that building. Our original budget was $300,000. So you can show, I mean, we're showing in staff that we really did try to figure out ways to make this reasonable. We looked at dividing it up into different halves. We thought that that would be more disruptive to the corridor, to basically do half of the project one year, and then a year or two later, do the other half of the project. And so we decided to go forward with the, with the whole corridor, put in the, the new sewers, and then repaved the corridor. I want to thank Anderson Bogart, who was our design consultant, that worked through many design changes and really went above and beyond to prepare and re-prepare documents as this project evolved and as things changed on the project. So I really want to say a big thank you to all the staff that helped at Anderson Bogart. And there's my contact information if people would like to get ahold of me about this project. So back to, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel. Any questions for Joe?
I had one, a question on the, with the new street section, will the, the existing poles no longer be in that west sidewalk?
We are asking the contractor to keep those poles in, in place during the construction. And so we're not going to be moving the poles. We're gonna try to keep those in place throughout the construction. And the sidewalk would roughly be in about the same place it's in today.
So the cost went from $300,000 to $525,000, and that's not including the underground work, correct?
That's correct. Yep, that's correct.
And you mentioned that in the future, this can be done, what the work being done now doesn't preempt, you know, that for, from being done in the future, I guess. My question would be, is staff planning to do this in the future? Or is there something that you need from counsel on, on this matter?
Well, we do have another project that is on the CIP list, on the unfunded list at this point, for Brooklyn Park. That would be west of Melrose Court, south of this project corridor. So there would be an opportunity, that is intended to be a whole reconstruction. There are some stormwater issues there and some sewer issues. And, and so that there would be a possibility, maybe with that project, to go back at that time and do that. At this point, we, we have not planned to do any underground location of the power lines. But again, that's not something that we can't pursue in the future.
Is, is the, is the possibility of a undergrounding funded by the property owners an option? Has that ever been done here?
I'm not sure about that. I don't, I don't know if we've ever done that before and what that might look like. One of the things to consider is many of the properties along this corridor are owned, but not resided in by those owners. So I'm not sure how that would change that conversation. If you were going through a more traditional residential neighborhood, you could get a lot more support, maybe, for an approach like that. But with many of the properties being leased out, rented out, I'm not, I'm not sure how that would work and how much, how much support you would get for that.
I, I wonder if you could describe the process that when you're gonna put something on the CIP that you usually would go through in order to include undergrounding of, of, of electrical wires generally? Or if that's not, maybe that's a question better answered by Jeff. I'm not sure.
The generally, when a project goes into the CIP program, it's identified for its primary purposes. This project was identified to fix very old sanitary sewer that had deficiencies. The sewer needs to be fixed. Other projects get put into the CIP to be a complete reconstruction of the corridor. To, to really look at this corridor to, to reconstruct it was going to require extra right-of-way to be acquired. And that was evaluated actually in 2017 and 2018. And the issue with this corridor being so narrow, 25 feet, is, and, and on both sides, both the east and west side of the roadway, there's quite a bit of change between the street level and the front door, the, the main entrances of the buildings. That there was a lot of issues, design issues that were very hard to get over. The, almost all of the properties on the west end, we're gonna have to have retaining walls. The, the front entrance walks, which almost every house has, were, were going to be significantly impacted. The driveway grades were going to have to be changed quite a bit. And so as we looked at that, again, it just, it just fell way outside of what the intended project was to be, which was to fix a sanitary sewer that needed to be fixed. I don't know, Janice, if that answers your question, but that's the particular case on this project.
That's really helpful. I guess what I'm sort of looking for is when, when the city is in general, looks at this, what, how do they decide when they're going to bury the lines? Because it's at our cost. I mean, it sounds to me like one of the things you're saying is sort of as part of the, it has, it's normally as part of it, complete reconstruction, as well as these other issues that you're mentioning.
Yeah, I think, I think with the complete reconstruction, that's always, and really, it's probably always the preferred option on every project. Unfortunately, with this project, by the time we really figured out what needed to be done for the original intent of the project, you know, by the time, and again, $20, $2016, it was $250,000. If you add 3% to that every year, then today's dollars, that'd probably be closer to $300,000. So you add $300,000 to a $525,000 project, and you're adding 30% on top of the project cost. So, and again, it's, it's not that, it's not that we wouldn't, as engineering, prefer the, the lines to be buried as well. We would. It just, it just didn't fit into the original concept of this project. But I would say, yes, a complete reconstruction project's always gonna look at that and, and have that in mind, that, that the power lines, the, the, the other private utilities, as well as the, the water and the sewers, the public utilities, would all be looked at in a complete street reconstruction to evaluate what needs to change and what needs to be improved. And that's a little bit different when you're just looking at trying to do a utility project. If you're just trying to replace the water mains, just trying to replace the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, that has a very different look to it.
On the lines of Counselor Weiner's questioning, I mean, obviously, quite obviously, this project needs to be done. And I'm in favor of the project being done, seeing the, the age. That's shocking, the age of this line, but that is an older part of the community. But I'm, I'm disappointed in that phrase, "in the future", because we all know what that can possibly mean. And then you're talking about disruption, that this is going to be a very disruptive project. Well, you turn around and somewhere down the line, need to disrupt it again to put those, those power lines underground. That just doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't seem logical. But I'm wondering also, on the lines of Janice's questioning, I mean, do we put some kind of a placeholder in our budget that would fund that eventually? Because it's only gonna get more expensive. And my preference would be just to do it now and get it over with.
Yeah, if I could jump in here, I, I think you have to kind of back off, back up and see a, a bigger picture with this, too. You know, we're talking about, I don't know, maybe a block and a half reconstruction here at a quarter million dollars. You can imagine, there's probably lots of neighborhoods in town that would like to see their utility lines buried. And we would like to see those buried, too. But you get into a, a, a scope of a, of an issue with overhead utility lines, you're talking tens of millions of dollars easily across the, across the, the city. And, and so, and I think if you, you know, if the council were to want to get more aggressive with burying utility lines, I, I think you're gonna want to be a little bit, you know, develop some type of assessment system for a utility line program like that. So, you know, this neighborhood would probably be a top candidate because poles are located, you know, in, in conflict with pedestrian amenities. But you'd also want to look at, you know, what's the risk to the lines with storm damage? And what are some of the other concerns that, that those poles may have? So the, the concern I have about, you know, immediately just saying, we'll go back in and do this, is, is, you know, you're, you're probably gonna, you're probably gonna easily spend not only the 300, but if you look at the public comments that you received, some of them are from areas outside of this project area. So that $250,000 cost, which is now 300, is gonna get to 400, 500, 600 by the time you're meeting everybody. And I, I just don't, I just don't know that that's, that's going to, to be the best approach. We do have an annual budget line for burying power lines. We combine them with, with current projects that we have. We typically focus on arterial collector streets, where the risk of an outage is greatest to the greatest number of people. So you've seen that with Dubuque Street, with, with Gilbert Street, with American Legion Road that's coming up. Those, those tend to be where we focus. Again, I think if counsel wants to get into a neighborhood system, we probably need to take a step back and think a little bit more systematically about how we'd want to go about doing that and how we're gonna fund it.
I would just add briefly that the temporary, the easements that we needed for this project were acquired with the representation that this project would be done before the football season started. So we, we need to stick to that schedule at this point.
And Jeff, just to follow up on John Thomas's question about some kind of assessment for the property owners. Joe, I appreciate what you're saying, that maybe there wouldn't be buy-in for that, but is there even a mechanism for that?
I'm, I'm not aware of one. I'd have to do probably a little research unless Eleanor knows that, that question from past research. But I'm certainly not aware of a, an assessment on a, on a utility line underground project.
Yeah, I mean, the idea of doing a special assessment, which I don't think Iowa City's done in four years or something, might be a possibility, but there, I'm not sure that that's a process that would be applicable when we're talking about contributing the cost of, of the, of the undergrounding to the utility. So something we'd have to look at.
Thank you.
And again, I can't talk to, I would add on, I can't talk to, you know, necessarily every project in town, but it's, it is a very busy corridor. So the other, the other thing to consider is where are those underground lines gonna go in this particular corridor? You got fiber optic cables in, on this side, you got gas mains on the other side. So it's, this particular corridor is very problematic because it's so narrow. It's such a tight corridor. And, and how do you, how do you do that? And where, where do you make everything fit? Not to say that that's impossible, not to say that, again, that that can't be done in the future. But it, it is a very complex, complicated corridor.
So in this one, there's already undergrounded, for example, fiber, where, so it wouldn't be just taking everything off the poles and putting it underground. There's already some there.
Well, if you take, if you take the poles away, if you take the poles away, then everybody's gotta find a space underground. So, and everybody's gotta find some place to go. And so there, there are some overhead, some underground utilities in this corridor. But again, anything that's up on the poles, if you take the poles off, they have to find a place as well. And if it was a normal, more normal right-of-way, where you got some parkway and you got some areas to work with, that gets, that there, those discussions with all the utilities get a little bit easier.
Makes sense. Thank you.
One, one other question I had would, would be if the poles are going to remain and remain in the same location in the sidewalk, do we have the minimum clearance on the sidewalk with respect to access at an obstruction? Which would be the pole?
John, we just talked about that yesterday a little bit more. And there, the current existing situation and, and the proposed situation would not necessarily be all that different. So we're not really putting in anything that's different than what it is today. To get that four foot, that would be required for ADA, and as I think what you're referring to, it, it would be, it would be very tight. There, there could be some places where we're under four foot.
My understanding is that at an obstruction, the minimum would be three feet, rather than, you know, the four feet would be in a standard condition. But when you encounter a pole or something of that sort, my recollection was that you needed a minimum of three feet at the obstruction. So I'm, I'm sensing from what you just said that we have at least three feet.
I believe that we'll be, we'll be pretty close to that. Yeah, it'll be tight, but I, I don't, I don't believe that we necessarily have existing conditions that are under that. And again, the proposed conditions that we're proposing are really not that much different than the existing conditions. It's always hard to guarantee that in the sense that and there's, there's wild cards in all construction projects. So, but the, the intention is not to make the situation any worse than it is at this point from from accessibility around those obstructions.
Okay, thanks.
All right. I'm gonna ask if anyone from the public would like to address this topic. If so, please raise your hand. Welcome, Dan. And I asked that, yeah, welcome, Dan.
Hi, um, I am Dan Cobble and I live near the VA. And since tonight's agenda is only focused on discussions about road and sewer repairs and it doesn't really have any other avenue for public comment, I think I'm going to be talking about sewers. And specifically, I will be discussing the citywide sewer where advocates for racial justice are currently drowning in a political quagmire. I request that the city spend part of tonight's formal council meeting focusing on repairing that sewer since it needs to be repaired much more than the others. In the wake of last week's vote to suspend the TRC, I have a few comments about how to make the the TRC better and improve its future. Um, I would like to reiterate some of the points I made last week.
Dan, so this has to be related to the topic at hand.
Well, I mean, it's about sewers. So I mean, it, I think that if you guys aren't allowing a public discussion for this is one of the most pressing issues facing the community. And I think that there has to be at some point tonight, a, allow, you guys should allow the public input on this. Because I mean, a lot of people, this is their reality. This is what they're fighting for. Everybody has points that they want to make about this.
And is this about sewers?
Well, it's about the fact that the city is current, I mean, rest, countless residents are are stuck in a sewer of racism. I mean, this city is a sewer to them because a lot of the injustices that many of them.
Mayor, this is Matt Germain.
Yes, Dan, thank you. I'm gonna have to cut you off now, but thank you.
I, I will.
Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
I'll move, ma'am.
Second.
Counsel discussion.
I'm in support of the project. I I certainly understand the concern and the desire to get all the utilities undergrounded. Uh, and I, but I think this represents an issue, I think, as the city manager laid out pretty well. This would be, um, this would be a really expensive project and it's one that will be wanted and desired across the community. So I think if we're going to take on that attempt to underground our utilities, we really need to do it with a citywide mindset of how we're going to work our way across the community, how we're going to prioritize what areas and how we would get the funding to go with it. Otherwise, I think it it becomes who's the, who's the squeakiest wheel in terms of getting these kinds of improvements in their neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this project. I think it's unfortunate that the undergrounding can't occur in a reasonable way. I'm satisfied that staff did a lot of trying to make that happen in a way that was feasible in this neighborhood. What really struck me was the narrowness of the total right of way. And given all the construction that's happening without acquiring additional, you know, widening of that right of way, it, I guess it it it's very unfortunate, but it makes sense to me that we'll make the situation as best we can, even if we can't underground the utilities there.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Maams?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number three is American Legion Road Improvements. Resolution awarding contract and authorizing the city engineer to sign a contract for construction of the American Legion Road Improvements Project. And could I get a motion to approve, please?
Move, Sally.
Second, Thomas.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Maams?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. And we are at item number four. Could I get a motion to adjourn to our work session, which will be in a different Zoom?
Second, Sally.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Aye. Well, I didn't oppose. We are adjourned to our work session in a different Zoom. See you there.